Hi, my name is Heather Moore. I'm the whistleblower that just contacted, sent an email to the Burlington City Council. This is the second video-recorded statement that I'm making for you. And I'm going to discuss, I'm gonna try to keep it short. Not easy to do when you're autistic and you have these savant capabilities. We pull up so much information. We have to try to sort through all of that. But what's, what I want to explain is when I did that email, I was in a hurry. I was being stalked and threatened by private investigators and/or criminal informants used by your various police departments, children for attorneys, or, you know, I, I, I know two of them identified themselves as working for a Boston attorney. Another said he worked for a, he was an apprentice for a Vermont attorney, and then explained how you don't have to go to law school in Vermont. You can just do an apprenticeship. And I wouldn't know that unless he told me. So I don't know whether these people work directly for attorneys, which I would imagine that's probably their strategy because they can claim that it falls under Attorney-client Work Product, and they don't have to disclose it. They don't have to wear body cams, and ultimately don't have to be accountable. They can lie all they want to. And lie to me, and, you know, whatever, claim that they're protecting their clients. And for the record, I know Chad taught me well enough. I heard him on the phone with plenty of clients, and he explained to me very well, lawyers don't get to commit crimes with their clients. At that point, they're not lawyers anymore. They're co-defendants. They can be severed as counsel, and tried as co-conspirators, and compelled to testify against each other. So they're real nervous because I'm recording everything. I can prove, me recording these private investigators threatening me, lying to me, trying to lure me back to the state of Florida, using racial slurs, talking about rape fantasies, masturbating outside my tent, slicing it up, lying, saying that they offered me victim services in a hotel room when they didn't, at that other encampment behind the Chittenden Humane Society, I guess is what it's called, or Animal Rescue. I'm not sure, you know, what, it's Chittenden, it has something to do with the animals. It's over there, right next to the New Hanaford and behind the Old Hanaford. Everything's kind of, kind of wonky and cockeyed over there because of the creek and the way the gutter systems work. But all of that was just basically victim tampering. And then I was posting on Facebook about how he, all of that was just to screw with us as, you know, victims of stalking and tampering, and then he had to go shut down the Sears Lane encampment to make it look like he was tough on that. But one of the things I said in my email was that I didn't step forward voluntarily to become a detective. I did not apply for a job with the law offices of Chad Cronin. He just told me to, he said, raise your right hand. I said, why? He says, I've gotta swear you and immunize you so you can't be subpoenaed and you can't be prosecuted and compelled to testify against me and my clients. He made it seem like it was just a formality, just a technicality, because I was in the house with him all day, I was in the car with him, I heard him on the phone with clients, I heard him on the phone with judges, prosecutors, other attorneys. And that made me, he was basically in the, he was violating their attorney-client privilege. I shouldn't have been privy to any of that. So he was doing that before he ever swore me in, and using me on cases. And I, as a cryptologist and codebreaker, what that means is I'm really good with game theory mathematics. It's a form of economics made very famous in the movie A Beautiful Mind about autistic savant, and he was schizophrenic apparently. If, I don't even know if that's true at this point. With all the way they've lied about stuff to exploit autistic savants. I'm not saying that's what happened to him, I'm just saying I don't trust anything at this point. But he, he made game theory mathematics famous. And it's a form of economics, and it's, if you Google it, it will usually use prosecutors and detectives as an example of how game theory mathematics is used. Prosecutors have to determine, okay, who's the bigger fish? If I go after the little fish, the little fish is gonna roll on the big fish, and then that will give me probable cause to do, get warrants and surveillance on the bigger offender, you know, that's game theory. Which of course, when I do it, oh, I'm a conspiracy theorist. And that's kind of the reason why I'm here in Burlington, because I'm basically quoting, paraphrasing Bernie Sanders. What are they gonna do, call him a conspiracy theorist too? You keep him in office. So there's other reasons why I'm here, I'll go into that. But when I said I'm not gonna die for anyone, I was in a hurry, I was in pain, that's not true. I am putting my life on the line, not only for the other members of my AA team, and my witnesses, and all of Kathy Hochul's people, so she can do her job. I'm, I'm making sacrifices so the people I'm accusing don't end up like Epstein. So their whole crap about malicious this, malicious that, she's just lying to get us in trouble. No, I'm holding back. I'm holding back a lot. All of us are. To keep these people alive. We don't want them ending up, ending up like Epstein. Okay? And they threaten my father's life, Darla Munus N'toloi of Homeland Security. She's an old childhood neighbor invited me to her home. I work for Homeland Security, which I already knew that, I was baiting her. She was basically making false statements, saying that I accused my father of molesting me physically, like actual physically sexually molesting me, which he did not. She was falsely asserting that I was saying that, and then she said, well, he just needs to be put down. No due process. No formal charge. Just lynched. He's Native American. Now, so she, she's Puerto Rican and white, but in her head, she wants to ascend to the white elite, you know, power construct. She's envious of white privilege, I guess is what I, is how I would phrase it. So that was before the, that was in February of 2015. We'd never even heard of Epstein yet. Okay? So our investigation goes back almost 10 years. I'm about to celebrate my 52nd birthday. I celebrated my 42nd birthday at Chad's home. He had his friend, who's an architect named Tom Loke, I believe, he's Vietnamese. They went to Gainesville, University of Florida Gainesville. I think it's, I think that's University of Florida. I think. Anyway, they both went to Gainesville. Tom studied architecture, they're drug buddies. And Tom took me to the grocery store, we went shopping, and there's pictures, like, there should be pictures on my Facebook page, if not my Facebook page, my Flickr, of me sitting on the couch with, I had a different pair of glasses on. And the dog, his dog Addison yanked my steak off of my plate. I wasn't vegan yet. And we had to chase the dog around the house to get the steak out of her mouth. So, and he got me this big huge thing of flowers, and eventually Chad was at some Democratic convention, some political thing, so he wasn't there, he didn't get there till later. But he did eventually take me to a Greek restaurant for my birthday. Paid with a credit card, so. My mother, here, he, he was using me on cases. And I, he, I've got a phone call, a recorded phone call with him. He was very intoxicated, he said, you solved cases in a matter of minutes, it took us years to figure out. You're brilliant. So, and he's not making any accusations about, oh, where's this, where's that? Because he tried, he's, what their, his whole story is, I'm, I stole stuff from him, left, and that I'm just mentally ill, and that's, he's trying to look magnanimous. That's one of the main, that's, you know, there's multiple reasons for them making the false psychiatric diagnoses. And one of them is so, when they, when they're making all these criminal allegations, well, why aren't you filing a charge? Oh, well, she's schizophrenic. They're trying to fake looking magnanimous, basically. But when I said I wasn't gonna put my life on the line for anyone, I was talking about Chad and his corrupt government clients. The civilians, I'm putting my life on the line for. And he, he exploited a lot of civilians. He was an addict. He would take high, you know, big drug cases, and a lot of times not charge them, let them pay with cocaine or other drugs, and then throw them under the bus and send them to prison. Lie to them and say the evidence was too overwhelming. They either needed to take the deal of five or 10 or whatever years, or he would say, well, yeah, I'll go to court for you, but you'll do 25 years. I've seen the evidence, I'm a former prosecutor. And that's how he would get them to agree to go to prison. So, and most of those people are probably people of color. So, all that, oh, I'm civil rights this, I'm civil rights that, I'm the biased crimes advisor. This is a huge public relations nightmare for Val Demings, her husband Jerry Demings, who's now the mayor of Orlando, he's previously the sheriff. She was the chief of police at Orlando Police Department. Oh, and then there's the Orlando Pulse massacre. All these people are gay bashing me for not being his house inward and his house bitch. He wanted me to just be his bitch. He would, you know, have me working 18-hour days, have the house, his father was recorded saying, I'm surprised you're not on TV. I'm, what did he say? I'm surprised your ass ain't on TV already. He knew I could turn a $15 antiques purchase or art purchase into 50 or 100 or $1,000. So he went out and filled the house, I mean, it looked like a hoarding situation. With all this stuff, he had the garage full, double garage, a U-Haul box truck that he had to keep paying rent on because it was full of stuff, he had nowhere to put it. And filled up a couple storage units, and two antiques, two or three antiques places. And I was supposed to sort through all of that, get it all listed. He would interview, ask me about this, 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 and this on the cases. And while he's on the phone, he'd be on the phone all day with his earbuds on, five cups of coffee sitting everywhere, change his clothes five times a day with multiple layers. So I was supposed to do all his laundry, do all his dishes, keep his, basically be his mammy. His mother refused to do it. He would have his friend Jacqueline come over and stay the weekend. He did not want to clean up after himself, he wanted somebody to mammy him. While I'm hemorrhaging, going septic, and falling from sciatica from a swollen uterus full of cancer, with a rupturing mass in it that was causing me to hemorrhage and go septic. I had to have multiple dental surgeries. They tried to kill me while I lived in his house. I came home one day and my antibiotics and my Dramamine for the nausea were gone. I said, where's my meds? My father took them. He thinks you're just an addict. I didn't pay for those antibiotics. They were free at the public pharmacy because many antibiotics are on a, they have a formulary for free antibiotics that's provided by the State Department of Health. He knows that because he took me to pick it up. After he took me to the dental surgery where he had to, the, I, I, he asked me a question. I talked to him and blood flew out of my mouth, and they had to rush me back into the back at the dental office at the health department. He knew what was going on. But his father was on the board of directors of the hospital that was unbundling and trying to get me fraudently qualified for SSI so I could then get Florida Medicaid, and then they would retroactively bill for all that Medicaid fraud. Now, when I was telling that to Josh Hawley's investigator at the Missouri Attorney General's Medicaid Fraud Task Force in November or December of 2017, he completed my sentences. I said, they do this, this, and this, and this, and he jumped in and said, and then when you get SSI, it retroactively pays for all that. I said, yeah. So they got it, that's why they gave me a whistleblower number. But once I contacted Boston PD on the Sasha Minou Curry case, I get a threatening email telling me never to contact his public office again. I said, that is not a frat house. That is not a University of Missouri frat house. That is not private property. That is a public office, and you're telling me not to contact you and report the stuff I'm mandated to report as a civilian or as a detective. Are you kidding me? So they blocked me, so I can't email them. So did Orlando PD's Internal Affairs. Your officers, Mike Goslin, and all of your Chittenden Special Victims Unit, nobody's ever emailed me back. I got one response out of all those emails from one person at University of Vermont, but she lied to me and said, oh, I can't download the recordings that you sent me. You don't have to download them, it's a link. If I send you this link to this YouTube video, you don't have to download it, you click the link, it takes you to the YouTube app, whether you're on your phone or on your, it takes you to the YouTube website, or the app, or whatever, and you click play and you watch the video, you don't have to download anything. So when she's already making excuses for not listening to the doctors committing crimes so she doesn't have to report to the sheriff or whoever, I'm not dealing with you. That tells me it's, I'm still not safe on that campus. Because that's what they do, they rope-a-dope me into somewhere and then lie, get security there, and put me on a psych ward, make sure I don't get my cancer treatment, make sure I don't get my special diet, make sure, they try to force me to take psych meds that further shut down my liver and kidneys and send me into congestive heart failure. That's why they had to dispense nitroglycerin three times in New York on that psych ward. I had to raise holy hell and get the house supervisor up there for them to even do an EKG. Or ECG, whatever. They didn't care. They were trying to kill me. The only reason why I got out of there alive was because some LGBT nurses realized, when I told them I'm being murdered as a member of the LGBT community, then they actually broke a laws and started sandbagging the doctors and everybody to create an exit for me. Otherwise, they would have killed me. They were going to keep me on that psych ward until I died, so they could control all the evidence. And for the record, all of this implicates our medical examiner. There is no way your medical examiner wouldn't know this was a murder. Because I have so much visible evidence of cancer. There's a whole lot that your, your doctor didn't put in the records. And I already have a recording of a security supervisor at one of the big retailers telling me that she's friends with the doctor who told her they're falsifying the death certificates to reflect COVID deaths when it's not, they're not dying from COVID. That's called a statement against penal interest. She's mandated by law to report it, so's he. So she just snitched them both out for enabling all of this crap. It's called cronyism, nepotism, something I'm sure that most of you as independents and progressives are aware of that goes on, and it's in both major parties. And it's at the federal level too. If I had to make a, if, if I were asked, who would you recommend us to do this investigation? I would leave it with the Sheriff's Department. They handled the situation the best. I mean, they're certainly familiar with federal laws. Now, would they be the ultimate, be all in the end-all? No, but the feds, I would not invite any federal jurisdiction to come handle this because they're part of the whole problem. Darla Munus and Virginia G. Piper, Virginia G. Goldwater Piper, the Goldwaters. They, she actually retaliated against Sheriff Wally George, got him arrested for federal embezzlement, it's like, it's something like embezzlement, misuse of federal funds to damage his credibility because he was at those lynchings with her. She's trying to destroy anybody who knows about her and all those lynchings. And that was all revolving around the child and sex and drug trafficking with the Clintons. With slick Willie, Bill, Bill and Roger Clinton, Roger Clinton wasn't, was convicted and went to prison for drug trafficking. And then Bill exonerated him. Which, I know many of you are very sympathetic to the alcohol and drug community and drug dealing and, you know, you don't, a lot of that is criminalized, and that is, Chad taught me, that was to maintain segregation. However, as an AA member, we as AA members, many of you know that judges and doctors routinely send patients to AA. And one of the reasons why you do that is because nothing replaces the therapeutic value of one alcoholic or addict working with another. That whole concept is based on, you ain't getting over on us. We're gonna call you out on your crap, and we're gonna help you find another way to deal with your issue. Every time you go to a meeting, there's literature read, and it says, alcohol is but a symptom. Saying, and alcohol can be placed with drugs. The problem isn't the drugs or the alcohol, it's you. And it says some are sicker than others, some we cannot help. However, they can recover if they have the capacity to be honest with themselves or others. And that's really the whole issue here. They are not capable of being honest with themselves, they lie to themselves, they are convinced that they are entitled to whatever resource they're trying to rape, sex, natural resources, whatever. The colonizers came over here for the gold, they're raping the African continent for diamonds that are not as rare as they want everybody to think, they just withhold, you know, create, it's called quantity on demand. Same with Arizona real estate. Arizona is only 17% privately owned, so there's less of it to go around, ergo, the prices go up. Even though it's in the middle of the desert, and there's no resources there. That property should not be valued. In fact, most of the larger pieces of property further out in the middle of the desert, in the middle of nowhere, is dirt cheap. I mean, you can almost not even give it away. So it's the same concept with, you know, natural resources. But what I'm saying is they really feel that they're entitled to enslave others, strip them of their resources, hoard the resources, hoard the wealth. And another reason why AA is, is therapeutic is you don't get over on us. And we say, you know, our coins and our literature say, "To thine own self be true." We do not have to sacrifice our safety and our civil rights as victims and witnesses for anybody. We're going to honor our Sixth Amendment rights to do a victim's impact statement and talk about what has happened to us and what we've witnessed. That's how, we have to, that is part of our program. We have to talk about it. Plus, we're mandated to report it, they just can't do it because the whole, they're not sending these people to lure me back to Florida because Florida isn't corrupt. They know, I mean, Rick Scott run, the Bushes run Florida. George W. Bush was blown up by the New York Times, Wall Street Journal, Boston Globe for enabling the Pfizer gabapentin-narontin marketing scheme that murdered millions all over the globe. They pled guilty in multiple federal courts, in civil and criminal, and that's what launched our investigation. All that crap got me sent to prison with cancer to hide the fact that I have cancer. The ongoing criminal enterprise is still ongoing. And those fraud schemes are exactly why Epstein took his victims to doctors who dumped them and called him crazy instead of getting child protective services on the scene right then and there, like they were mandated by Florida law to do. I don't know if those, if he did it in New York as well, you know, I don't know. Because he had so many different residents. He had a New York apartment, he had a residence in Florida, New Mexico, of course, he had the island. But at the time we launched our investigation, they had just finagled that deal with Epstein, Florida prosecutor Acosta, who's also affiliated with Kamala. He went to work for Kamala Harris's law firm, husband's law firm, Doug Imhoff's law firm, who was defending, I, I don't think that's a coincidence. I mean, think about it, this is one of the largest law firms in the world. And I'm, I understand headhunting, I understand the concept of recruiting the best of the best. Do you really think that it's a coincidence that they recruited Acosta, the Florida federal prosecutor who was, who was prosecuting Epstein? And thus, going to be prosecuting all of his enablers, his partners in crime, the doctor, prosecuting everybody a part of that criminal trafficking, human and sex trafficking organization? You really think it's a coincidence that they recruited him at that time? And then he turns around and acts as Epstein's advocate instead of advocating for we the people? And then Trump appoints him as Labor Secretary? Come on. Everybody could see that, you don't have to be a conspiracy theorist to see that. The man resigned because the whole public saw that. Now, Kat Sullivan tweeted and said, you know, these guys might be, these, these private investigators might be bullied into screwing with you. Nobody bullied that guy into masturbating outside my tent. Nobody bullied his friend Tent Slice Joe, who went to, ultimately got a job at Ali Kebabs to try to convince me he wasn't a cop. So his name and everything will be, you know, on record there. Nobody forced him to slice up my tent. Nobody forced him to lie to me and gaslight me. What's more, Bernie's office is right down the street. The biggest majority of you on the city council are progressives or independents, just like Bernie. All of these people could have gone to you as their coworkers since they ultimately work for the city of Burlington at any time. Or the state, because they're defending, you know, this is, involves Paul Dragon and many of the local lawyers and the judge. That's who these private investigators are acting on, they're acting on behalf of the corrupt people for two years? Oh, now they see which way the wind's gonna blow, now they're gonna say, oh, I was bullied, I was threatened. You could have walked into Senator Sanders' office or contacted the city council at any point and said, hey, do you know your mayor's having us murder this lady? No, they lied to you, lied to Bernie, lied to Hochul, lied to her team for two solid years. And only until the chips start falling the other direction, aw shit. Maybe, oh, uh, uh, they're blowing Cuomo up for intimidating people. Uh, I was scared, I was afraid. Oh, the fuck you weren't. That's why they've still got the private investigators on me, hoping to find out who's got all the audio, all the video, the SD cards from the trail cams, my trail cam that is usually in my pack, and it's got a small camera, and it can see a lot, it's camouflage. It, the sound in the video is really quite good. It's enough. And they're, they're, that's why they're so scared, and we've got audio, and, I mean, they're sitting there saying, oh, well, she didn't have our permission to record us. I don't need your permission. You're making criminal allegations. I'm entitled to present exculpatory evidence. Especially when you're saying, I'm making false criminal allegations. Why would I record an encounter and then falsely assert what happened in that, lie about what happened in that encounter, and then try to get you to listen to the recording? That don't make no sense. They're the ones trying to say, don't listen to the record. She committed all those felonies on that recording that she made of herself committing those crimes, but don't listen to it, just take our word for it. As cops making a false criminal allegation. Get the hell out of here. I mean, what I'm saying is, this shit is so blatantly obvious. The, the mens rea with the criminal act and the heinousness of their crimes is so outrageous. My brain has a hard time conceiving it. I just could not conceive of how unbelievably sick and stupid these people were. And then I go, oh, wait, they think I'm gonna die any minute. They thought I was not, not gonna live long enough to get the truth recorded and get it to the people that will do something about it. So that's the next question you're gonna have. No way anybody's that stupid. No way anybody's that stupid. They never thought they were ever gonna be exposed. They were living in their little fantasy land where, uh, they never suffer consequences because they've always got each other's back, the old boys' club. And I don't wanna hear about, oh, that's racist, no. Chad taught me critical race theory. Meaning, you cannot discriminate against the white power construct. Because they have all the power. The only people who can discriminate against others is someone who has power. I don't have any power, fuck, I'm not even getting paid. They got me fraudently qualified for social security. I deserve social security for stage four cancer and the sepsis and the heart attacks. They did it under a false diagnosis. And then they're illegally, still illegally trying to recruit my case so they can control the evidence. And Chad taught me that Brady violations is all about controlling the evidence, you have to. So you can control what is presented to the judge or judges or jury or whatever. It's the same constant, you know, abuse, whether it's domestic violence, sex trafficking, uh, doesn't matter what, how that abuse manifests, it all, the dynamics are all the same. The economics and the game theory is all the same. And since we're talking about Epstein's people, I don't think it's a real stretch that they're gaslighting and, and manipulating and doping their victims and calling their victims crazy. They've got a history of it. Which, at this point, anybody at Safe Harbor or COTS or a new place who tells you, oh, she's crazy, she's nuts, it's not gonna, i- i- that's another reason why I've waited and let Governor Hochul and her team and Ron Kim and Bernie's team get so much of this publicized. I'm basically at this point paraphrasing what's already all over the news every single day in New York, if not nationwide. How does that make me a conspiracy theorist? I'm basically quoting what's already a matter of public record. So anybody calling me a conspiracy theorist at this point is suspect. So I'm already at 32 minutes, I'm gonna cut this off. If anyone has any questions, send me a question, send me an email. Uh, do it, a, a separate email, don't res, don't hit reply because I got a whole bunch of replies, everything that I emailed to you also went to every, pretty much almost everybody in the New York State Legislature. Everybody that I could find email addresses for. Um, and they all, all, kicked back automatic emails saying, thank you for contacting our office. It went to Bernie Sanders, it went to Ron Kim, uh, it went to the sheriff and his, like, it's not, you don't call him undersheriff, it's Jeffrey Turner, I don't remember what they, he's like the second in command, top deputy, whatever. Um, it went to members of the press, it went to a lot of people. And I got a lot of responses that are automatic responses. And there's so many, it's just easier because I won't know what's what. The way Gmail is set up to run a thread, it's very confusing for me, so it's easier for me. If you just send me, just type in my email address, feudysavant@gmail.com, send me an email and say, Ms. Moore, would you please expand on-